Hello and welcome to the January 21st, 2020 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Michael O'Reilly, the chairman of the commission. And I'm going to read a brief introduction to the rules. And this day of COVID. On March 14th, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and then in effort to reduce the risk of transmission by virtue of attendance at public meetings, Governor Lamont suspended in-person open meeting requirements. Accordingly, the town of Monroe has elected go-to meeting. This technology will fit up to 250 members of the public to participate. Any member of the public who desires to submit written information relative to the business at port on the agenda may do so up to one hour in advance of the meeting via electronic, via email. Notice is here by given that this remote meeting will permit the public to view or listen anonymously and when permitted, participate in real time, be recorded and posted on the town's website, and be made available to the public within a reasonable amount of time. In addition to standard parliamentary procedures outlined on the agenda, the special rules shall apply. Please mute your microphone so as to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking and on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. Use of the chat feature is prohibited. All right, we're going to call the roll. Just respond with an affirmative if you're here. Let's start with Sarah Stroud.
Here.
Georgia Kontos. Rick Schultz.
Present.
Nicole Lupo.
Present.
Dominique Panici.
Here.
Ron Schneider.
Affirmative.
Rob Westland.
Present.
Leon Ambrose.
Present.
Ryan Condon.
Present.
Bruno Maiini.
Present.
Okay, great. Then we will start with general public participation. Guidelines to general public participation. Commission welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments. Speakers are required to state their, to first state their name and address for the record. At this point, we're going to allow public participation. For any members of the public that have any comments or would like to add anything to the meeting to bring anything to the attention of the commissioners, that does not have anything to do with any of the applications that are before the commission at this point, or that may be likely to come before the commission in the near future. With that said, are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission tonight?
Yes, Marcia Fitzgibbons, 38 Indian Hill Road, Monroe.
Okay, Marcia, now these comments need to be limited to items that are not before the commission tonight.
That are not before the commission, so.
Right.
So 615 Main Street is before the commission, so I can't comment, right?
Right, when we have that public hearing, there'll be time to comment at that time, at that point.
Okay, okay, that's okay. Thank you very much.
And the other members of the public? Hearing none, then we'll start with our first public hearing. First public hearing as posted on the agenda, SCP-2020-01 File Number 1621A, has been postponed. The second item on the agenda, the second public hearing, ZCA-2030-03 File Number 1016D, has been postponed as well. The third public hearing for tonight, the sick number six on the agenda, SDP-2020-01 File Number 139, has been withdrawn. The fourth item on the agenda, number seven, the third public hearing for tonight, SCP-2020-05 File Number 1625A, 615 Main Street, B1, shall begin. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yeah, Ryan's gonna read the call.
All right, Ryan, go ahead.
Planning and zoning commission Monroe, Connecticut, notice a public hearing to be held January 21st, 2021. In accordance with CPS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, January 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter via go-to-meeting@https://global.goto-meeting.com/join/147541701, with an additional access by phone at 408-650-3123, access code 147541701, concerning the following, SCP-2020-05 File Number 1625A, 615 Main Street, special exception permit application for proposed change in use from general retail to an outdoor and indoor sales of accessory outdoor amenities, retail use including site improvements related there to or property located at 615 Main Street, assessors map 78 lot 10, located in a business district 1B1. Scott Hoinesburg, Eastern Jungle Gym applicant, John Cook, Pit Karen Inc., owner. Give me a second. Please check the town of Monroe website now for announcements of meeting cancellations, rescheduling, and for instructions for attending and or participating remotely electronically. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices by appointment and on the town's website Notice was published twice in voices on Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, and Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. All yours.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read the exhibits now.
Go ahead, Rick.
Exhibit number one, application and narrative. Exhibit two, engineering report. Exhibit three, proposed site plan set. Exhibit four, supplemental ARB materials and elevations. Exhibit five, ART, town engineer. Six, certified mailing receipt. Seven, updated renderings per ARB meeting. Eight, ARB referral notice. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Soli, it's your turn.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. Offices located in Monroe, 501 Main Street. So with me here this evening is Mike Lambert from my office. I believe Scott Honusberg from Eastern Jungle Gym will be trying to call in. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through the proposed application. I might kind of give an introduction and an overview, and then Mike's gonna run you through some of the details, and then we'll both be here to answer any questions that the commission or the public may have. So. I picked the wrong screen share. Here we go. Okay, great. So thank you. So again, so we're here tonight to talk about the proposed application at 615 Main Street in Monroe. Just to orient everyone, here's an aerial of the town of Monroe. Site's located on Route 25, Main Street, in this location here. You may be familiar, so Route 25 runs north-south. The intersection with 59 is right here. This is kind of midway between the northern half of Route 25. On this location, the site's currently improved with the Wood Market, a retail establishment. It's a little bit south of the plaza with Subway south and a little bit north of the new Aubuchon Hardware Development. So Eastern Jungle Gym is actually an existing business in town. They're a little bit further south of Route 59, currently located approximately here along Route 25. You may be familiar, they sell swing sets, other outdoor amenities, decks, below ground, or excuse me, pools, things like that, gazebos, basketball hoops. We have a swing set that we purchased from them, which my kids absolutely love. And they're a business that's been very successful in town, and they're looking to expand their operations and kind of get into a better location. The commission may remember, we actually came before you recently to talk about and better define their use and better establish their parking requirements, which this commission gracefully approved those amendments. And now we're here tonight to talk about the specific site plan application. So Mike's gonna run through some details, but we're essentially looking to maintain the building in its current configuration, make some improvements to the parking lot, and create some additional outdoor display area that can really be, we think, a benefit to the community and to their operations. And they're excited to kind of continue to serve the town of Monroe and the broader area and kind of put a little bit of a bigger footprint and really do some great things for the property and for the town. So with that, I'll pass it off to Mike, who's gonna run through some of the technical components of our application, and then we'll be here to answer any questions.
Yes, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, commission members. My name's Michael Lambert, professional engineer with Soli Engineering, 501 Main Street, Monroe. So for this site, it's about 1.4 acres. It's the existing Wood Market building. There currently are two curb cuts onto Main Street from the property that we're gonna look to maintain, but we're gonna convert it to a one-way in, one-way out, with the northern side being the one-way in, to be able to drive across and then exit out the southern side. The, currently today, there's an elevated sidewalk. There's an ADA ramp that's in the middle of the parking lot. The, it's a very tight squeeze trying to park and get through the front area. So what we're proposing is to eliminate the elevated sidewalk, the ADA ramp. The front doorway to the building is gonna get removed and get relocated. So the entrance into the building is gonna be on the northern corner of the building. There's gonna be a new deck, new stairs, a new ADA ramp to be installed, to be able to come from our new handicap parking space, to be able to ramp up and get into the building. Along with these changes, there is still gonna be a small sidewalk adjacent to the building that's actually gonna be made up of their patio, different of the patio pavers that they do install and do sell, to be able to try and incorporate that into our site design. The parking spaces that are in front that are angled are up to code and do meet the town of Monroe's regulations. And along, so when you'll be able to drive through, you can actually park and be able to get around the parking spaces there. As you drive around the building, we're gonna have to expand the rear of the parking lot to be able to get parking at the back side of the building. But we are also putting a retaining wall off the west, northwestern side of the building. For the display area that's to the north, we're looking to remove a vast majority of the pavement there and to be able to level out the site because currently the driveway kind of drops down to the backside of the building. So the entire display area is gonna be nice and level, have a gradual feel to it, to be able to treat it as a backyard. The entire display area that they're gonna have out there is gonna have completely fenced in. There's gonna have different types of fencing material around the exterior of it, which is another feature that they do install and sell from their companies. Along with the removal of all the pavement, we're actually decreasing the amount of impervious here by 6,400 square feet. So we are working with the town engineer and satisfying his comments that he has for the site. So we are meeting the stormwater quality manuals and all the drainage requirements by the town. The other features on the site. So as far as the display goes, as Kevin kind of mentioned out, we, they do have playground equipment. They've got sheds, pavilions, pergolas, awnings, chicken coop, decking materials, hot tubs, there's a fiberglass underground pool or in-ground pool that they sell, outdoor kitchen components and amenities, basketball hoops, trampolines. So all that was gonna be located on the exterior, but it's also gonna be displayed interior to the building as well, to be able to give them both an indoor and outdoor display area. Along with the site, there's gonna be a bunch of landscape features that we're gonna do. Currently along Main Street, there's a bunch of overgrown trees that are gonna be removed and kind of replaced with two street trees, but then a lot of low-lying shrubs and plants to be able to give a clear view of the property in the display areas. And as there's overhead wires on that side of Main Street, I don't always feel that it's always appropriate to have the street trees grow up into the power lines at that location. But the whole front grass island between our parking lot and Main Street is gonna get a fresh plants and shrubs. There's gonna be a, to the north side of the north entrance, there's gonna be some plantings. There's gonna be a street sign that's out there that they're relocating the existing sign that they have at 391 Main Street and bring it to this site location. There is a, for a trash component for the property, we're not proposing to have a dumpster on-site, but we do have a future dumpster location at the rear of the property that is gonna get still landscaped in that area. However, the trash that, and debris that gets generated on-site is very minimal. We're gonna have it into a residential wheeled garbage cans, because it's very minimal paper that's actually on-site that's gonna get thrown out or employees lunches. Anything that has trash that is brought in from setting up their display areas, any packaging like that, is gonna get removed off-site at the same time that it gets installed. So all their equipment gets brought into box trucks, gets unloaded, created on the displays, and all the trash goes back in with the box truck that they have doing the deliveries. The rest of the site, there's an existing septic system, public water, gas, and overhead electrical. All those are remaining to, remain as is on serving, servicing the property. Like I said, decreasing the stormwater, we're meeting the town Monroe regulations, the 2000 Connecticut DOT drainage manual, the 2004 Connecticut stormwater quality manual. I mean, all their requirements. For the development of the site, we do have a sediment erosion control plan that is up to the 2004 manual, and it complies with all their requirements for the erosion controls. And then the last item that I have is the site lights. There's a bunch of existing lights out there that have kind of that dark sky compliant box shape and recessed light bulb. So you're not gonna be able to see it when you drive by. But we plan on maintaining those light poles on-site. There's three of them that do have to get relocated due to the site development. One at the rear of the property or the parking lot to get relocated along with the expansion of the parking lot. And then two that are currently would be inside the display areas. We want to kind of relocate those closer to where the, where you're gonna be driving. And that kind of entails the exterior of the site. I'm gonna turn it back over to Kevin to talk about the, more of the operations standpoint.
Thanks, Mike. So included in our, in our package, obviously, is we do have the floor plans and the elevations. You know, as Mike indicated, this really is all just a display operation. This isn't a retail operation. You can't go in and buy a swing for a swing set or anything like that. What happens is, when you go to the facility, you get to get a chance to kind of see what they have on display, and then you can place an order, and then they'll, they'll schedule delivery, and they'll come and deliver it right to your house. So there's no actual point of sale, retail, where you go in, pick something up, and walk out. It's all just display. From an architectural standpoint, as Mike indicated, we're removing some of that stuff along the frontage, the raised walk and things like that, and focusing the entrance on the northern end, which will really allow for, we think it's gonna be a really nice entrance when you come in, providing some additional signage along the front facade, and creating a new standing C Mansford roof along the front and having that wrap around over the new main entrance. And again, incorporating a lot of their products into their actual building construction. We have an pergola over the entrance door, and we're building some new composite decking with some ramps and stairs and railings and things like that to really kind of show any of the potential, you know, patrons to the facility, what the, what the opportunity is for what they can buy and get in their own, their own backyard. Mike indicated, again, we have the sign, those sign details, and in accord with the Monroe regulations, that it's gonna be relocated from the existing location. And then we do have some, some renderings and models that were prepared. And this just again kind of shows, it's really cool that we're able to incorporate a lot of their different patio pavers right into that sidewalk. So you're gonna have that different selection there, gonna be able to really see it, you know, touch it, feel it, and really get a good handle on how that's gonna look. You can see incorporating that into even the parking spaces and then some of their other features along the side of the building. And then just a rough idea of a potential layout for the different products that they have available on display and for purchase. So, you know, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. You know, I think this is a relatively straightforward application. We're excited that you've got an existing business in town that's been doing well, where they have an opportunity to kind of, you know, further cement their footprint in the community, actually purchase a property and propose all kinds of great improvements to it and continue to be a valuable member of the community. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have and the public as well.
All right, we're gonna go to Rick first. Are there any comments on the application review team's list that have not been adequately addressed?
Kevin, where are you with the town engineer on the stormwater drainage?
So, so we just had a conversation, we just got comments back from Scott. I think either earlier this week or last week, we have had a conversation with him. Scott did have some comments about our drainage configuration. We had some discussion with them. He's basically said, you know, because our drainage actually connects into a catch basin in the street, and then it's conveyed through a state system across the street and then to the east prior to discharge. You know, he, Scott's basically said, as long as we're able to review what we're proposing with the DOT, he'd be okay with that. And I think we're comfortable with that. You know, he had some other comments regarding some additional signage he'd like to see on the property. Do not enter sign. Do not enter sign here, some additional signage and things like that. We can certainly address those comments. We think they're reasonable. We kind of talked a little more about the operations again. You know, the, the proposal to better restrict access so that the northerly drive is the entrance only. This is now one-way, and then the exit only here is a considerable improvement because right now, when you have the both enter and exit, there's a traffic signal just south of this driveway. And trying to have vehicles come in there and come out kind of creates some conflicts potentially. So, so our, our modifications from an access standpoint really should be a considerable improvement to how the site is accessed today. And as we talked through that with him a little bit more, I think he felt comfortable with that, and we can certainly work through these. He did, he did have a comment about requesting a photometric plan. Since all of the existing fixtures out there are, already meet the requirements from a dark sky compliance standpoint, and we were simply just providing really minor relocations for those poles. We did not prepare a full photometric plan. We didn't have the specifications on these pole-mounted fixtures. You know, we, we think that, you know, we're confident that there, it will still comply. And again, it's kind of an existing condition. We're simply relocating those poles. So we would, you know, we would like to allow that this be sufficient from a lighting plan standpoint. The rest of the drainage comments, again, we talked through them. We did, we did talk about adding some additional curtain drains for along the edge where we do have some excavation through here and then a foundation or footing drain for the proposed retaining wall. We, we agree with that, and that's reasonable. We'll provide, we can provide for that and connect that into our existing system. You know, I think, I think generally his, his comments were reasonable. I think his bond estimate was reasonable. It was consistent with what we had proposed, so we didn't really see any major issues with his comments.
Yeah, essentially, Mr. Chairman, with the recent text amendments to allow this, the, the site plan shows that it's well organized and it's a clean approach. It should also be noted that the Architectural Review Board at its Monday meeting was pleased with the quality of the materials that are being used. And although the old porch is being removed along the front facade, as the applicant indicated, plantings will be provided along the street line. So all in all, it's, it's an upgrade to the site and well thought out and organized.
Do we have an inland wetlands approval?
There were no inland wetlands on the property, and we did coordinate with the wetlands agent prior to application to verify that we wouldn't need to go before the wetlands commission.
Thank you. I've got a poll with commissioners now for questions, and then we'll go to the public. First, Commissioner Nicole Lupo. Do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a comment. I think I agree with Rick that the site looks wonderful. I think that it's a nice layout. I like the one-way entrance and the, the change of the entrance way to the north with the handicap parking right there. Thank you. My question was just answered with you zooming in on this. My question was, and I may have missed it, was is there gonna be a fence around the area where the place keeps are displayed to help prevent anyone from sneaking in there at night to have some fun? But other than that, no questions. I think it's, I think it looks good.
Yes, the entirety of the area will be surrounded with fence.
Thank you.
Commissioner Panici, do you have any questions?
Yes, I think it's a great thing. It's a great improvement where they are, and they have a great service, so I like what they're doing.
Commissioner Schneider.
I, I like it too. I think it's great, great for Monroe. The only concern I have is traffic on 25. To, people just aren't smart when it comes to pulling in a one-way. As long as the signs are enough on the entrance or the exits, and maybe one car length, but the entrance be wide enough for people come, you know what I mean? I don't know. I just, I worry about the traffic on 25. That's really it.
Yeah, so we, I mean, we, that was one of the things that we really looked at when we were looking at the access management because the site is as tight as it is and they're under existing conditions with both of them being full movement. With that close proximity to the, to that signal, and I think I could probably best show it on this. You know, restricting that access to the business exit only, what that does is it almost has, it almost allows it to operate in conjunction with this signal. So when this turns red and it creates that backup, it also kind of creates platoon breakup for vehicles to kind of come in and out through here. You know, another component is, is traffic for this type of use is very, is very minimal. I think we've been able to demonstrate that in our parking assessment and the fact that this site doesn't really require as much parking as a normal retail operation. And the parking and the traffic is kind of, kind of goes hand in hand. So we did think, you know, we did look at that, and, and obviously, you know, you'd always wanna see if you can maximize the, the storage length and the queues for vehicles, but it's a little bit difficult because the building is where it is, the access and the drives are where they are. So we really have to try to do our best to, to make a, as best as we could. And since, and since we aren't gonna have a lot of traffic with this, I think that. I think that's, you know, I think what we did is what we're confident is going to be, won't create any issues from a traffic standpoint.
Yeah, that last picture sideways into it. It looked wider than the middle picture. I think it's good, man. I like it.
Commissioner Westland.
All right. Yeah, I like the way the new parking lot ingress egress access points. I think that's that's a upgrade as the existing setup, I believe, sends mixed signals to the oncoming traffic with the parking with the traffic signal so close. Like the other commissioners, I love the rendering. I think we need to promote local business, thriving new business like this. And will there be any service or installed trucks kept on site on a on a full-time basis?
No, all the all the installations are come out of the headquarters, which is actually based in New York and come right from the from their factories and their warehouses. So this is strictly just kind of like a retail display facility where you can kind of come in, you can see it. But nothing actually, none of the product comes in and out of here. There won't be any products stored here or deliveries in and out of here. You know, we did provide an overhead door on the south end so that there's enough room to actually move hot tubs into the facility and actually set up and things like that. But nothing, there won't be any any heavy vehicle traffic or delivery truck coming out of this out of this location.
So there won't be much in the way of receiving at all? Because I'm just looking at the rear area and it doesn't look like there's a large area for trucks to turn around or unload or anything like that.
Correct, yeah, there really won't be any. The only thing that maybe come through here would be like a FedEx truck or, you know, UPS for those types of mail deliveries and things like that, but nothing from a product standpoint that requires any other larger vehicles.
Okay, yeah, that's all I have. Everything looks looks great to me.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
Kevin, how old are the lights on that?
You know, they actually, that was one of our thoughts. They had been replaced at one point because they are, they do have that, you know, we have a picture of them on our plan, but they are that, you know, shoebox dark sky compliant with the recessed light. So because they kind of comply with the current code, we wanted to just simply replace them. I don't know the actual date of installation, but I know that they aren't original because they have been upgraded at some point.
Okay. And then Scott was worried about turnaround for the truck. Did you address that at all? Like UPS comes in there?
You know, we we talked to him about that. You know, we we don't want to, we don't want to really widen back here too much or create more, you know, disturbance because from an operation standpoint, there really won't be that kind of traffic. And, you know, primarily, if 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 a FedEx driver or something comes through here, they're going to kind of come to the front. They're probably going to stop right here, hop out, you know, and then and then just go out and leave. So we don't really expect a lot of traffic, vehicular traffic back here. And and the other component is there, this isn't a, from a parking standpoint, you know, we've provided this parking because it's what's required per code, even with our our proposed reduction. But there likely won't be more than two or three cars here at any one time, you know, from an employee standpoint. And then, you know, whoever else is here, you know, visiting and looking looking at the product. So we expect that this lot in the rear really to be empty, you know, for the most part. So and since we don't really have a lot of vehicular traffic back there, we didn't feel the need, you know, we certainly don't want to widen unnecessarily, create more impervious surface than necessary than the operation needs. So, you know, even if someone did happen to come down here, they can back up and and kind of navigate through the site that way. And since that, we really feel that's more of like an onsite operation issue that we were hoping that, you know, we weren't, we weren't going to have to create more impervious surface and things like that for for really a a non-event that we don't think is going to really happen often, if at all.
Well, I just, I can see his concern. If somebody's going to back down that driveway, it's going to kind of be dangerous, but there's no way that you make a turnaround back there?
There's, so there's already an existing slope through here.
Yeah.
And we're and we're, you know, we're providing some additional grading through there to kind of like create the rest of this paved area, you know? And if we were to expand it more, we'd have to bring in some additional retaining walls, which we could, but it's also just kind of, it's additional land disturbance that we really don't feel is necessary from an operational standpoint. So, you know, again, I think if, even if a truck came down here, they could still back up along this. And since there's not a lot of traffic through here, we don't really see that as a major operational issue.
Is there doors behind there, anything that where they would be receiving stuff back there or no?
No, there'll be no receiving back there. The only thing that's back here, there's an emergency egress from the, so this actually drops down below and provides access to the basement in the back, which really won't be used for anything. And then there's, there's a, you know, a fire escape stairwell that provides an emergency egress for the for the first floor. But there won't be any other loading operation like that. And you can actually provide it right here so that a box truck, if needed to, could kind of back right up to that and then and then leave.
Okay, so are you going to put that do not enter sign on that?
We are, yes. Yep, he suggested doing that here.
All right, and then I think that was, well, you, what, what's your planting plan? What plants are you going to put in there? You have that up there? Just show me.
I can. So we kind of focused our landscaping, you know, around the entrances when you first come in. And we have kind of a combination of shrubs. We've got some, you know, we have some, we have an elm tree on here, a larger tree here right at the entrance. We have some river birch, cuype magnolia for understory trees here and actually over here on the south side of the building. We've got a number of shrubs, grasses, vines, ground cover, perennials, some inkberry, some sweet spire, some some grasses, some earth dendrons, some snowberries, some creepy junipers, blue lily turf. You know, we kind of focused and made some nice planting beds here for when you come in and you're driving along the existing driveway and then focused on the two entrances and around the proposed sign and then some additional back here on the uphill side of this retaining wall, kind of adjacent to the display area. So we, you know, we we were, you know, I think we found some opportunity to kind of really create some, some, you know, added enhancement from an aesthetic standpoint with the landscaping. And that is also incorporated into the renderings too, which you can see here.
So I'm good for now, thank you.
Commissioner Condon.
Yeah, so there's no concern. I know you're moving the lights. With those, with any overflow into the back neighboring property?
No, we're actually pulling those lights further away.
Yeah, okay.
Light here, we're pulling all the way to to this edge. The existing light on this side, we're pulling closer to the driveway. And then this is within, you know, a few feet from here to here. And there's a pretty steep slope and a grade so that this is still below, you know, and there's pretty extensive tree cover back here. So we don't expect any impact to any of the surrounding properties.
Okay, and then my other question is, there is a, there's a side road there. There's no way of putting any type of plantings between? Right, isn't it technically a road right there on the north end of the property?
It it's really interesting. It's, this is Little Diet Road. It's actually on our property and it provides access to some residents towards the rear. You know, we're, we're basically, you know, we're, we're, we're kind of getting close to it just because of where it is on the property. You know, but we are providing some kind of decorative fence along there to create some, you know, to improve the aesthetic for, you know, people kind of passing through there. Definitely unique with this site that this whole area is all, you know, actually on our property. But we do have, as you can see through here, there's a little bit of a buffer that's a little bit probably more more robust than what it's shown on the rendering. But here's the existing limit of pavement. We have, we do have a buffer through here before we get to our fence and our display area.
Wes, thank you.
Commissioner Madiyini.
Uh, no questions.
I have no questions. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this 615 Main Street application? Any members of the public that would like to comment on the 615 Main Street application? Didn't we have someone before or was it?
Yeah, Mike Srambanowski.
Go ahead, Von.
A number of commissioners have expressed the questions regarding the traffic situation with the existing curb cuts. All of Main Street has a curb cut problem. The the last one I remember was up at Mason's Bradford Green area, I believe they called it. And I think this is something that the state should take a look at as they did and as they commented on and we promised to get reports back to the town at that time up there regarding curb cuts. And they did have some ideas at the time as to what they would do. I've never seen anything advertised or shown as to what their report back on that concept was. Everybody agrees there are too many curb cuts on Main Street. That's the big problem. And it's not so much how how well you make the property look, it's how safe it is. You don't have to have a lot of traffic to have an accident when you, when you, people try to cut across the lane of traffic that just has no forgiveness whatsoever and no control over the speeds. Has any traffic professional, particularly from the state, commented on this or been asked to comment on it for the specific purpose of what it does to the curb cut problem on Main Street, period? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Benofsky.
Hey, can he actually state his address for the record?
Seventy-six Holly Place.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on the application? Any other members of the public like to comment on this application? If not, then we'll go back to the applicant to wrap it up and give us direction.
Sure, so I'll just, I'll just respond to Mr. Benofsky's comment. So this site will have, as I mentioned before, I think, I mentioned, you know, through our discussions with Scott, we will be provide, we will be coordinating with the DOT. We have, you know, really minor curb work kind of right here, which will kind of clean up an existing, you know, not the the cleanest situation. So we will be talking to the DOT about this project. It will be reviewed with the district office. And we actually spoke, we actually reached out to their drainage engineers today, but their traffic folks will also look at this. And again, I think that the big thing is that, you know, while there are a lot of curb cuts on Route 25 and you always like to do access management, for us, I think that the restriction of an ingress and an egress only will really really improve the flow in and out of this facility. And and the DOT will be part of it. There will be, you know, encroaching permits required from them. So they will have their review. And if they do have any, you know, difference of opinion regarding that, you know, we would, and it would change the site plan anyway, we'd have to come back before this commission to talk about it. So we feel that, you know, we definitely think that it's an improvement. The DOT will be a part of the process as we go through it. And, you know, we're confident that that they'll have another say out of it as well.
Okay, Mr. Soli.
And and then, you know, beyond that, I think, you know, this, the, our proposed application, again, we think it's a good one. It's trying to, you know, redevelop an existing site, you know, maintain it the best that we can, but provide considerable improvement. The the plan complies with the Town and Monroe zoning regulations. It complies with the plan of conservation and development. And we feel it'd be a great, a great project for the for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Soli. I imagine you'd like to close the public hearing tonight?
We would.
It sounds like the commissioners are going to be amenable to closing the application as well. There's nothing else from the commissioners and I'd like to close this application and close this public hearing. Hearing none, then this is closed. So we're going to go on to the next public hearing, which is in three parts. There's a zone regulation text amendment. There's a zone boundary change. And then there's a site development plan. The way they're arranged on the agenda is probably the best way to go through them. Of course, we will have to go through them individually with reading of the public notice and reading of the exhibits. But just keep in mind that the next three public hearings are all on the same project. So for number eight on the agenda, RAA 2020-07, file number 1014E, Zone Text Amendment. Ryan, do you want to read the public notice? And I don't think you have to read the
Website?
Website address.
Good, all right. So I will just go with, all right, we'll start with Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, Notice Public Hearing to be held January 21st, 2021. In accordance with CGS 87D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, January 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via go-to meeting. RAA 2020-07, file number 1014E, Elderly Affordable Housing District. Zoning Regulations Text Amendment Petition by Mutual Housing Association of Southwestern Connecticut, Inc., DBA Connecticut Housing Partners proposing the establishment of a new affordable housing zoning district restricted to at least one resident per residential unit or apartment being an elderly person 62 years or older and all units slash apartments being rentals at 100% affordable as defined pursuant to CGS 8-30G along with Associated District Land Use Regulation and Standards, including Applicable Density, Lot Area and Bulk Standards, Mutual Housing Association of Southwestern Connecticut, Inc., DBA DT Housing Partners, applicant petitioner. Notice was published twice via Voices on Wednesday, January 6th, 2021 and Wednesday, January 13th, 2021.
Thank you. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
For this application, exhibit number one, application and draft text. Exhibit two, Western Council of Governments Referral Response, no comments. Exhibit number three, MetroCog Referral Response, no comments. And that completes exhibits for application, the first application.
Thank you, Rick. And for the applicant tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Dave Fooks. I represent the applicant, Connecticut Housing Partners. I'm a lawyer from Hartford. And we're here tonight for an affordable housing application regarding 195, 201 and 210 Main Street. We have three, as was mentioned, we have three matters on the agenda. They're all part of an interrelated, integrated affordable housing application, which under Section 8-30G, the state Affordable Housing Statute, are really one application. And the interrelationship is such that it may be more efficient with the commission's permission to hear all three matters together. And that's up to you. Otherwise, what I would probably do, again, with your permission, is Otherwise, what I would probably do, again, with your permission, is avoid duplication, simply incorporate part of my presentation for the first two, or actually my entire presentation for the first two applications in, in the hearing on the site plan. I did discuss this issue with Mr. Schultz about how you would want to proceed. And I had expected that you would want to consolidate the three, but that's entirely up to you.
Yeah, you can give the whole presentation. We'll, our memories are good enough that we can remember what you said.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, you want Ryan to read the other two call hearings, and I'll read the exhibits and get that out of the way?
Sure, let's do that. Go ahead, Ryan.
All right, Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, Notice of Public Hearing to be held January 21st, 2021, in accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, January 21st, 2021, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via go-to meeting and by phone. ZCA 2020-04, file number 1017D, 195, 201, and 211 Main Street, combined acreage of 2.07 acres. Zoning Boundary Change Petition by Mutual Housing Association of Southwestern Connecticut, Inc., DBA Connecticut Housing Partners, proposing the rezoning of current business District Two zoned property. Assessors map 18, lots 39, 40, and 41 to a newly established affordable housing district for which the establishment under zoning of said new zoning district is the subject of a separate zoning petition. RAA, sorry, RAA 2020-07, file number 1014E, Mutual Housing Association of Southwestern Connecticut, Inc., DBA Connecticut Housing Partners, applicant petitioner, Greystone Group LTD. Also, SDP-202005, file number 145, 195, 201, and 211 Main Street, Site Development Plan, Application for the Development of a New 49-Unit Single Building Elderly Affordable Housing Development, Including Site Improvements Related There Too for Property Located at 195, 201, and 211 Main Street. Assessors map 18, lots 39, 40, and 41, For Which the Establishment Under Zoning of Said New Zoning District and the Designation of Such Over the Subject. Parcels on the Official Zoning Map are Subject to Separate Zoning Petitions. RAA 2020-07, file number 1014E, and ZCA 2020-04, file number 1017D, respectively. Mutual Housing Association of Southwestern Connecticut, Inc., DBA Connecticut Housing Partners, applicant petitioner, Greystone Group LTD. Notice was published twice in Voices on Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, and Wednesday, January 13th, 2021.
Application Exhibits for ZCA 2020-04, File 1017D. Exhibit number one, Application for Zone Change. Number two, Doggett Tech Valley Council of Government Referral Response, No Comment. Exhibit three, Western Council of Governments Referral Response, No Comment. Exhibit number four, MetroCog Referral Response, No Comment. Exhibit number five, Certified Mailing Receipts. Application Exhibits for SDP 2020-05, File 145. Exhibit number one, Application and Supporting Materials. Exhibit two, Engineering Report. Exhibit three, Plan Set. Exhibit four, ART, Town Engineer. Exhibit five, ART, Health Comments. Exhibit six, Certified Mailings. Exhibit seven, ARB Referral. That is all.
Okay, Mr. Hoops.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The applicant, as I mentioned, is Connecticut Housing Partners. They're a nonprofit affordable housing organization, outstanding reputation, fact record. They're Vice President for Real Estate. Steve Gulick is here, and after I'm done, we'll say a few words about the organization. Like to introduce the, the members, the presenters, as we go along. What we would like to do is have each design professional and engineer present their, their presentation kind of straight through. And then, at the end, we thought it would be more efficient to have, to run through the engineering comments all at once, so that it's all done at one time. And it's, it's not just like, I think that it'll be clearer that way. This is an application, as I mentioned, for an affordable housing project, a 49-unit senior affordable housing project. That's under Section 8-30G of our general statutes, Affordable Housing Law. And all three applications are, are under that Affordable Housing Law and our government body. As, as you're aware, the town has been taking steps lately to amend its plan of development and its zoning regulations to try to enhance affordable housing opportunities in the town of growth. We believe that this application dovetails with that effort. And to that end, we've worked closely with town staff to, to develop a, a proposed new affordable housing regulation that we think satisfies the concerns of all concerned. It's the effort's made, many suggestions to our proposed grant, and we've incorporated virtually all of them. So it's a product of a collaborative effort that's, that's
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're having difficulty hearing from Mr. Hoops. Can you adjust anything, Dave?
What I'll try to do is
That's even better. That's better.
Okay, I'll lean forward. So I was saying that we've, we've worked with town staff on a proposed new affordable housing regulation for your consideration. We've gone back and forth, staff had a lot of suggestions, and we've incorporated virtually all of them. So, so what you have in front of you, insofar as our, our application for amendment to the text of the regulations is a product of a very, very collaborative and cooperative effort. I summarize in, in my narrative, in our narrative, the, the effect that 30G, 8-30G has on the application. Essentially, what it does is it supersedes all the normal rules, and it substitutes one basic rule, which is that the General Assembly is asking towns, in the case of an affordable housing application, to, to approve those applications unless it finds, based on the evidence that's presented to it, that denial is necessary to protect some substantial public interest in welfare or safety or some other public interests that sufficiently substantial and important that it outweighs the need for affordable housing. Generally, in a 30G matter, issues, if there are any, focus on public safety matters, because that's, that's the, the, the kind of thing that, under 30G, the commission should be focusing on. 30G application doesn't have to follow any particular form or procedural format. You can do them a lot of ways. You don't have to follow the, the conventional route of applying for amendment regulations, and then applying for zone change, make a property, to put a copper property in a newly created regulation, and then apply for a site plan or special permit. But we've, we've chosen to adapt our application as much as possible to the, the traditional land use processes, and that's why you have before us, before you tonight, three different applications. One is for amendment to the, the text of your regulations, as I mentioned, to create a new affordable housing or AH zone, and that's the, that's the text that we've, we've worked closely with the town staff on. The second part of our application is pretty straightforward. It's to simply rezone the three parcels in question here from the existing zone, which is B1 to the new affordable housing zone that we propose. And the third part of the application is quite simply a site plan application for the specific development proposal. Our proposed regulation as written would apply only to the particular three parcels at question, although if you saw fit and you wanted to, you could expand it, and it applies to other, you know, other sections of Route 25. That's, that's entirely up to you. Of course, our proposed new regulation is also restricted to projects where the resident of, the residents of the units would be persons 62 years or older, so it's a, a senior project. Much of the language of our proposed regulation is modeled on provisions that are already in your regulations. And, you know, although we do have the benefit of special rules under 30G, as I mentioned, we hope and we're very hopeful, actually, that after you've heard our presentation, you'll agree with us that this is a, a very attractive and well-designed project, and that it's on a site that's, it's very well-suited, because it's, it's basically naturally buffered because of where it is from neighbor impacts. It's surrounded on two sides by water company land. And we, we, again, we, we, we hope you'll agree that it's, it's a verified site plan, and that there's no public safety or, or other issues that would be a concern under 30G, and that we, we think that there, it, it's the kind of project that, even if this wasn't 30G application, could be favorably viewed by this provision. And that it's something that's going to benefit town of Monroe, especially its, its senior citizens, and that it's something that when all is said and done, we're pretty confident everybody can be proud of. So with that, I'd like to ask Steve Gulick to say a few words about Connecticut Housing Partners.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name's Steve Gulick. I am Vice President of Real Estate for Connecticut Housing Partners. Connecticut Housing Partners has been developing, owning, and managing affordable housing throughout Connecticut for 31 years. We currently have over 1,000 residents in 508 units through 15 properties, 130 units of which are elderly, similar to the project we're proposing tonight. We hope that you will see that we've spent a lot of time and energy in putting this presentation and this project together. We take a lot of pride in the projects that we have in our community, and, and we try real hard to become, you know, valued members of the communities that we own properties in. And that being said, I'd like to hand off the presentation to Emily Weckman from Two Design. She is our site planner.
Good evening. I was, my name is Emily Weckman with Two Design. May I please have the screen sharing option? Thank you very much. Okay. Good evening, I am Emily Weckman. I'm a landowner contact with Two Design. Our office is located at 114 West Main Street in New Britain. The team will briefly like to present the site civil, traffic, and architectural components of the project. Then, following our brief presentation, we would like to address the town comments that we have received. The existing site includes three properties, 195, 201, and 211 along Main Street. These properties are located just off of Old Main Street that runs parallel with Route 25. The parcels total just over two acres. They're currently zoned as B1. Two of the existing parcels have homes on them, while the third is wooded. The site consists of steep slopes to the north, east, and south. The proposed development would add 49 units of affordable senior housing to the community. The site design complies with a submitted affordable housing zone. The proposed three-story New England-style building is located to the north, while a 59-car parking lot will accommodate residents and visitors to the south. A proposed patio extends off the south end of the building to provide a sunny outdoor space for residents to enjoy. The access drive is located to the north, connecting Old Main Street with a proposed T-intersection to Route 25. The grading of the site responds to existing conditions and constraints. Retaining walls are located to the northwest corner and along the east of the property. Any slope greater than 3:1 will be treated with rip rap. Other site improvements, including site lighting, signage, and screen trash enclosure, fencing, modular block walls, and plantings, are included in the site improvement. We were approved at the IWC December meeting and are awaiting the release conditions of approval, as the drainage system is designed to accommodate a 100-year storm and has no direct impact to the wetlands. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Civil Engineer Dave Bjorkland, who will address drainage, septic, and utility components of the plan. Dave, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself and restart? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Members of the commission, my name's Dave Bjorkland. I'm president of the firm of staff Bjorkland Associates. We have offices in Monroe, and I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. Our role in this development proposal was to design the site storm drainage and the site septic system. And I'd like to go through those. The site, basically, all drains currently towards Old Main Street, which is that narrow portion of pavement that's between Main Street. Then there's a, a sort of a green area, and then there's Old Main Street. The site essentially drains in that direction, and after development, all of the site is going to drain to, to the east. There will be no, no runoff that is going to go to the rear or to the west of the proposal, proposed development. The storm drainage is a traditional, we're picking up all the drainage in the catch basins in the parking lot and in the driveway to the building. We're proposing to store all of the water, the increase in the runoff under the parking lot and a series of galleys that, that located just to the south of the proposed building. And this, the storm drainage, the detention, and the water quality elements that we've incorporated into the site meet the town requirements. We'll get into Scott's review later on, but it meets the town requirements, state DOT requirements, and the DEP requirements for water quality. Ultimately, the system does discharge. There is a catch basin in that green area between Old Main Street and New Main Street, and from there, it, there's an existing pipe that discharges to a wetland area that's located on the east side of, of Route 25. This is, for those of you, everybody's familiar with that area. This is that wooded area, you know, between the car wash and sipping of fuel. With regards to the, the septic system, although the northern part of the site where the building is going is characterized by shallow bedrock, on the south end of the site, we identified very good well Uh, on the south end of the site, we identified very good well-drained bank-run gravel. Uh, with very few limitations uh for septic. Uh, and so we, that's why we've chosen to put the septic area in, in that area. It's under the parking lot. Uh, this septic system has the capacity to, to handle the proposed population of the building. Uh, and the building is, uh, the septic system is not only going to have to be approved locally. Uh, but because the flow to that septic system is over 2,000 gallons a day. Uh, it's also going to have to be approved by the state health department. That uh, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, following that will be our traffic engineer. I'm just going to walk out. For his plan, if you bear with me for one moment.
And, and while you're doing it, Emily, I'll, I'll go ahead. So for the record, everyone hear me? Okay? All right. For the record, my name is Joe Balls. It's, I'm Director of Transportation for VHB. I'm joined by my, my associate engineer, Will Kresik, for any questions we may have. I'm a licensed professional engineer, state of Connecticut, and practicing traffic engineering for the last 32 years. Uh, myself and Will prepared the trap review that you have that was submitted. And I want to provide a, spread a quick, brief overview of the trap review that you, that was submitted. So the trap review itself, we looked at, like we always do for traffic studies, we look at the existing conditions, we look at the existing volumes. We look at the crash history, we look at the speeds. And obviously we look at the trip generation. So for this development, this is, this is one of developments that, that uh, from a traffic engineering standpoint, are pretty straightforward. We're talking about very low generation of traffic. The existing conditions, Route 25, we all know Route 25, uh, it's 40 miles an hour post-speed limit. It's a very good sightlines along this section of Route 25 uh, on the frontage road, as well as the proposed site driveway we're gonna, we're showing. We're seeing about 50% split of traffic between north and southbound, which makes sense. All pre-pandemic traffic volumes, we know that they've. They've gone down by 20% or so and, uh, with the pandemic. We look at the crash history along here. Obviously, uh, right in front of the site, there's really no crashes to be there. We saw a couple of crashes to the north, uh, the north of the old, of the paved accessway or. Uh, we saw like two, uh, I think four, yeah, four crashes to the north of that. And we saw two crashes to the, to the, um, I'm sorry, I got it backwards. Four crashes to the south junction of the paved accessway. And we saw two crashes to the north uh junction of the paved accessway. So we don't have any real crash history here. And we, we, you know, you would expect that. Uh, you know, they are skewed accesses, but there's no real development along here. So we're not going to see really any real crash history. And the crash themselves are just property damage only, uh, runoff the road type of crash. So, so nothing really uh earth-shouting to report in terms of the existing conditions. From a traffic standpoint, with great sightlines, we have sightlines that exceed DOT's requirement. Uh, we have over 600 feet of sightline. DOT needs 425 with based on the speed limit. So we have excellent sightline. The road's very straight in this section. We have very low crash history. Yes, we have 20,000 vehicles per day. That's Route 25. We know Route 25 itself. But to, to uh, address all that, we are really talking about a very low generator. So this development, we use the ITE land use code. So we know ITE is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. You've heard that before, I'm sure. The Trip Generation Manual that we all use as traffic engineers, 10th edition. And that's the land use code that makes, is most appropriate for this development. And using that and the number of units that we have, and you, if you saw, if you read the travel, but you'll see that we basically have. You know, we have less than 20 cars being generated in the morning peak hour and afternoon peak hour. And that's what we expect for this type of land use. We're not going to see a lot of traffic. That's why these are, these are great projects from a traffic standpoint, because we're not having to look at significant mitigation. So 20 cars in the peak hour and the morning peak hour, afternoon peak hours, very low traffic as compared to 2,000 in the peak hour on Route 25. Or 20,000 over the course of the day. So just want to reiterate, very low generation of traffic. So from, from a conclusion standpoint, um, we're, we're not seeing any impacts, as you can imagine. And we didn't do any, any, any analysis, because there's no need to do analysis. We look at the sightlines. We have great sightlines. Uh, we don't anticipate crash history here. We have good access here. So the access itself that, that's being shown on the plan. We had a, we had a virtual meeting with DOT, with the District Three, District uh Three Traffic Engineer and Site, and a permanent investigator. And we basically in a virtual meeting, we sketched out. Uh, we actually had a virtual meeting, we talked about it, we pulled the plan, this plan up. And we actually sketched out this layout. This is, this is what you're seeing here. Um, and they wanted us to remove the north access. And that's what you're seeing there in that plan. We're, we're, we're basically running a new site. Drive to, to the old paved road and a new, thank you Emily, and a new site access. Now, why do we do that? Well, DOT plows um still use the, the, you know, the old paved, paved accessway. They still want to be able to get in there, use that. Take a break, turn around, whatever. But we were told they, they use that. So, so this plan provides foreclosure of the skewed accessway. Which should have been removed anyways as part of the bridge project, they asked me. But we're going to remove it as part of this project. We provide a T-intersection. Standard T-intersection for the very low traffic that we're generating. We, we accommodate SU30 vehicles, we accommodate state plows. And we fit it in between these two trees that we have there. Very nice trees along there. That we are fitting this driveway in between those two while maintaining good site distances. So this makes sense. This, this really makes sense. From a flow standpoint, from a traffic standpoint. And that's why I wanted to conclude my, my, my travel viewer saying that the proposed development. With this site access, as we're showing, will not have a significant impact to traffic operations on Route 25. Without taking any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next, we will like to pass it over to Dave Goslin with Crosskey Architects and he will be sharing his screen.
Thanks, Emily. Um, if you can give up your screen, I'll share mine. Okay, can everybody see that? My name is David Goslin. I'm a principal architect with Crosskey Architects. We are located at 750 Main Street in Hartford, Connecticut. And um, the view you have on your screen is the proposed rendering we've, we've designed for the building. Um, as you can see, it's, it's a three-story uh structure. Um, one of the things we've tried to incorporate is we, we wanted to kind of keep it a, a very traditional looking building. Uh, keep it in keeping with the architecture of Monroe. Um, knowing that it is a three-story building, we kind of designed um the ends of the building to kind of step down. So the uh third floor units on the each end of the building is kind of designed under the roof. So we kind of scaled the building down as it tapers to the edges. Uh, as previously mentioned, uh, we'll have 49 units of affordable housing. There'll be independent living facilities. So every apartment is its own unit. It'll have a kitchen, a, a living room, a bathroom and a bedroom. Also incorporated into the space is um. I'll flip to the floor plans here. Um, on the first floor, um, at the, at the south end of the building is the main entrance to the building. The main entrance is here. As you come into the, the main entry, there's a lobby. Uh, in the lobby, there's a management office which handles the day-to-day operations of the facility. Uh, it's only open during the business hours of the day. Uh, to the left of the lobby is a community room. Which is a gathering space for the tenants who live there. It becomes a social activity event space. Uh, which this will open up onto a covered porch and patio to the south end. Uh, between the building and the parking lot. So it's a nice vantage point looking over the parking. Um, and it's, there is a covered area from uh, from the sun. So you can either pick, sit in the shade or, or in the sun, depending on your, your need. Off of the community room, we have a small kitchen and an activity room. This is intended for having uh small functions for the tenants. Um, and, and to host and cater events that happen in the community room as well. Off the elevator, off the uh, the lobby, there's an elevator at this end of the building and in a fire stair. There's also another elevator at the far and the north end of the building where there's a secondary entrance and lobby. Um, this is really intended to provide the second means of egress from the building. But also it provides a secondary access for people who park near this end of the building to come directly into this entry without having to go through the main entry all the time. Um, some of the other amenity spaces that are being offered for the residents that live there is uh, there's going to be a nurse's office, a nurse's station. So that if uh residents have a appointment, that the appointment can come to them and there's a private office uh for that function. Uh, there will also be a hair salon um located on the first floor. Again, this is, this is um specific to the tenants. It's not open to the public and it's just an amenity for those who live there. Uh, on the second floor, there'll be a chapel and a media room. This is kind of a, a TV area where they can. Have uh movies and have religious services um for the residents. And then uh, the, each floor will have its own individual um common laundry area. So there'll be laundry facility for all the tenants uh, uh, within the building. So basically the floor plan stack, we have a total of uh 15 units on the first floor, 18 units on the second floor and 16 units on the third floor. We actually lose units a, as I mentioned, on the third floor as, as the building tapers to the ends. The individual units are pretty much all the same. Um, there is a uh open living dining space, which is uh adjacent to the galley kitchen, which has a little breakfast nook. And counter space. Uh, and then the other half of the unit would contain a decent-sized bedroom closet and a handicap accessible bathroom. Uh, all the units are pretty much the same. This particular unit depicted here does not show the bay window. The units to the front will have a bay window uh built into the design to give a little bit of an interest to the front facade. Uh, here you can see the black and white rendering of the front facade and the massing of the building. But really the intent of this uh photo is to show what we're doing in the back of the building as well. Um, the photo on the bottom is a 3D model of the rear elevation. And what we're looking to do on the front elevation has these gables, which add a little interest in uh architectural element to the, to front facade. Along with these bays. But on the back elevation, which isn't really visible from the street. Um, the sort of property adjacent to the, to the rear is the water company's property. So that will probably never be developed. So in the back, we, we did away with the gables uh over these projected areas. And in lieu of the gable, we're providing a, a flat roof surface. And this roof surface will act as a platform so that we can locate all our mechanical equipment. So we don't have to have any mechanical equipment within view. It'll be all tucked away, kind of hidden on the roof and built into the roof. Um, getting into the materials, uh, this is a colored rendering of the front facade. Here you can kind of see, one of the things with the use of materials and colors, we're trying to kind of break down the scale of the building and, and add a little interest. Um, the base of the building will have a stone veneer. Uh, this is the kind of the pattern we're looking at. And this would be a water table that extends all the way around the perimeter, comes up to the first floor window sills. Uh, we're also using this material for the chimneys that will be located on the roof. Now, these chimneys are somewhat false chimneys and that we don't need them for uh ventil, for uh, for fireplaces or anything like that. But we're uh, loo- looking at them on the roof, because we use that to kind of conceal and hide any rooftop vents and penetrations. We'll kind of organize them and hide them in the chimney so they're not really seen or kind of unsightly across the roof. The only active chimney will be this chimney over here, which is part of the community room. There'll be a gas fireplace in the community room itself. Um, so that's, this, this will be an active chimney at this end of the building. On top of that stone veneer, we'll have a pre-cast uh water table, which will cap, cap the wall and transition it to the, the siding material itself. The siding material is uh, it's called, the trade name is Hardy plank. It's, what it is, it's a cementitious uh material. It's non-combustible, it doesn't rot. Uh, it's made of uh, concrete and fiber, uh wood fibers. It comes pre-finished and it holds paint very well. Um, so we're proposing a two-color scheme using traditional clapboard siding. There'll be a Navajo beige and this taupe color. The taupe color would be on the lower level uh, as you can see here, and the beige would be on the third level and in the gables. And then as an accent siding, we have this uh shake uh siding, which would be a brown in color. And that would accent the bays of, uh, in the little panels below the windows. Uh, the asphalt shingles for the roof, we're using an architectural asphalt shingle uh that has a, a double profile. So it gives some shadow lines and uh really gives a nice texture to the roof surface. The trim boards will be also of Hardy, Hardy trim. Uh, we intend to uh have those finished in white. And that will provide nice accents throughout the building. Uh, here we're creating a band that ties in with the fascia of this, of the, this octagonal uh bay. And we're carrying this across uh and as a datum and we're using that to kind of separate the, the scale. Uh, if, if you will, with the color and help break down the, the massing of the building by use of different colors. And then the, the windows themselves will be a traditional double hung window. Uh, in this case, we're using a fiberglass window uh just for ease of operation and uh less maintenance. And that basically concludes my presentation. At this point, I think I'll turn it back over to Dave Hoops.
Uh, thanks, Dave. I, I think what we would like to do now, and obviously if there's any questions, please jump in at any time. Is I, I'd like to ask the appropriate presenters to, to run through um. The engineering comments, so that that all is done at one time, um, to follow it a little bit easier. So uh, perhaps Emily, you can start.
All right. Uh, Joe, our traffic engineer will address the first uh comment that we received from the town engineer. Uh, that is in consideration of within layout of the secondary paved access way within the state driveway along the property frontage.
Yes, uh, I'm getting a lot of feedback. Is that, is that me? Is it? You hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. So uh, the first comment, as, as Emily mentioned, was regarding the um. The, the unnamed ax- secondary paved accessway, the, the old Main Street Road, as we, as we call it, interstate right away. So as I mentioned in my presentation, we, we had a virtual meeting with DOT. And we jointly developed that, that, the site access location. Uh, and so Scott, so Scott's coming here regarding moving it, uh, making it one-way northbound only. Um, DOT wants to keep in both directions. They did not want to change the direction uh or, you know, in, in terms of the, the accessway. So we want to leave it as it is uh and not change the direction. We are concept planning as it is. So the DOT snowplows have access to, to the accessway from both directions. So we, we don't, we do not plan on changing that. However, we will be going to DOT for a formal encroaching permit application. As we know, that process is after this process and things may change or not. I don't think they're going to, because we have, we had a good plan put together. But we are not planning on changing the accessway uh not to northbound flow only. We're going to maintain the, the two-way flow.
Okay, the second comment I will address. And as, Dave, if you would allow me to uh present um through my screen. The comment is the sidewalk should be provided across the property frontage along the access connection to the internal site building. Uh, the team responses, we will provide a sidewalk along the front entry drive to the intersection. On final plan, the team will coordinate the location of the requested frontage with DOT. So on this plan that we have added a, a sketch of the access wall. That will follow the grading of the entry drive and will extend um out to the DOT um property line. And again, we will work along with DOT in regards to locating the property frontage walkway. Uh, when we work with them on the, on the encroachment design and application.
Emily, can you show the, the access plan again, the concept plan I was referring to in the presentation? And again, for the record, Joe Balls. So comments one, two, three, four and five from Scott. Uh, have, you know, he has some comments on the striping, the access uh. Uh, as well as verifying sightlines. He has a question on the radii. So we did, we, you know, we, we are planning on making some minor adjustments to, to the concept that Scott has identified. Uh, we, we are going to adjust the radii a little bit uh to better accommodate SU30 vehicles. Uh, yeah, I think we're going to adjust that. We adjusted center lines a little bit. So we, we did, we did for the most part, address the, the comments that he provided, one, two, three, four and five. And he'll see that when we make a revised submission of the plan. So we, we are addressing the comments as they are. But we're obviously not going to change the flow of the, of the, of the, of the paved accessway. Um, and, and again, we know this is DOT encroaching permit, but this was developed in concert with DOT. So we're pretty confident we're going to come away with. An encroaching permit similar to what we were showing here. Thank you.
Uh, the next comments in section C of Scott's uh comments are going to be addressed by our engineer, Dave Borkland. Dave, you're on mute. Can you uh unmute and restart? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Saved me twice. Reinings and utilities uh from Scott's report uh. Uh, item number one, uh, he wants catch basin 12 to be relocated to the north. Uh, we really can't do that because that catch basin uh picks up. The discharge from our stormwater collection system right at the end of the driveway. So uh, I'm sure we can work. So I'm sure we can work this out with Scott. We're going to, and we've mentioned it to him already, we're just going to add another catch basin to the north to satisfy that requirement. Considering the cut into the hillside, a footing or slab drain should be indicated. This building is not a slab, it's not in a basement. We do have drainage structures that run along the rear of the building to pick up any runoff that, you know, that happens to occur in that cut and around the retaining walls to the west of the building. So I don't think drains are necessary. I think we can work that out with Scott. Scott had mentioned that he wants, there's a swale that's located at the very south end of the property. We have a slope that comes down from the parking lot and then meets existing grade. We can't do anything there, because of the septic system that's under the parking lot. And we need, any drainage structure would have to be fifty feet away from the septic system, and we just can't do that. Now, approximately about an acre of the site drains to that south side of the property and Old Main Street. We're cutting that drainage area down to about an eighth of an acre. So I don't see where we're going to, we're reducing the drainage impact on Old Main Street by picking up most, all of the runoff from the south end of the site in the parking lot, detaining it, and then piping it across Main Street to the wetland on the other side. So there's an extreme reduction of flow to that south area. So I, we don't think that's necessary. Proposed water service and underground utility service, they will be shown on the plans. Items five, six, seven, eight, and nine are all technical issues. These were also mentioned in the, in his wetlands review, and we have cured these issues with Scott in the, in our resubmission to the Wetlands Commission. So I don't think any of those should be of any concern to the commission. And, you know, they've already been cured, and to Scott's satisfaction.
And in regards, in regards to Section D for sedimentation and erosion control, we agree with his comments, and we'll adjust our plans accordingly with our revised submission. Section E, considering the impact to the state railway, application should include input from state DOT, correct? We will be doing a encroachment permit, and we will be working along with CT DOT. Again, comment number two is regarding the DOT. We will provide additional grading at the roadway intersections as we work with that intersection with DOT. Comment number four in Section E, details of the proposed retain wall should be provided, noting that certification by geotech engineer should be provided upon completion. We do provide the retaining wall details, and we do require that a certified structural engineer provide the shop drawings and stamp those details. And then, number five is in regards to a state stabilization bond. At this point, I'll turn it back to Dave Hoops, or the team would like to field any questions from the commission?
Yes, thanks, Emily. That's our formal presentation, and obviously, we'll all be happy to answer any questions.
So Rick, do you have any other comments from the ART that haven't been addressed? They seem to have addressed all of Scott's comments.
Yeah, the, the comments, those comments need to be readdressed. I do have a couple of statements to make, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you want me to do this now or after the commission asks questions.
No, go ahead now.
Okay, this is, this is a summary and overview of what's going on at the moment. Our consultant for the POCD update is aware of this application and has followed the pre-application discussions. The POCD update consultant will be recommending to the POCD update committee that this site be considered for potential affordable housing, and will include it in the Affordable Housing Plan, which will be formulated after the adoption of the POCD 2020. The Affordable Housing Plan will be mandatory for all municipalities in the state of Connecticut by 2022. The three-story component was reviewed by the ARB this week, and they found the overall architecturals to be consistent with the traditional design, and understood the need to increase to two-and-a-half-story, that are town limits, to three stories for this project to achieve its development goals. It was determined at the staff level early on to work with this applicant to achieve the following, and before I get into that, it should be said that when a municipality objects to an A30G proposal, it usually ends up being approved by the courts, resulting in a development which falls short of the architectural expectations of the community. This application, as discussed by our consultant at the POCD update, has indicated that it will provide elderly housing for the population of this town and region, and was recognized as such in the questionnaire that the POCD committee completed. This attractive multi-story building will fit on this property, as discussed by the Staff has always worked with the goal in mind that we need the applicant to provide reasonable but effective zoning standards, you're hearing them tonight, to guide this overall development of the project, including parking, circulation, et cetera, and you heard from the consultants tonight. And lastly, staff is well-aware of this applicant's track record. I've called the various communities, and all of them are very proud of what they've achieved and what they provide in each and every one of those communities. So I just wanted to give a little background on where we are now, where this needs to go, and it worked out quite nicely, because it coincided with our POCD update. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Rick. I'm going to poll the commissioners before we go to the public. Questions and comments? We'll start with Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you, Mike. A lot of my questions were answered, but I just have a few. I just want to agree with Rick, that I think this is a beautiful plan. I think it's right in line with our POCD mission and our goals. I think the location on 25 is perfect for not only residents, but if there's workers that need to come up or family to visit. I also think it fills a great need in this town for our aging population and the ability to keep them here. One, a few questions I have, just to clarify, when I was reading, this is for sixty-two and over, correct? Is there any leeway, or will there be any changes for fifty-five and older that have a disability?
Steve, do you know about that?
Yes, Steve Kulick with Connecticut Housing Partners. Unfortunately, because of our, one of our funding sources is through Housing and Urban Development, Section 202, grant, it's specific to sixty-two and older. So we have to be compliant with their guidelines to be able to get approved for that funding.
Thank you. Another question, and thank you for showing the interior as well. On the second and third floors, are there any areas of rescue that are cited in case there was a fire or emergency and residents had to wait to be rescued? I know nursing homes tend to have these, just wondering if that's built in to this plan at all?
This is Dave Goslin, the architect. The building will be fully sprinkled with a fire protection system that's required by code, because we do have people sleeping in the building. The minute you add the sprinkler system into the building, and in addition to that, each of the tenant demising walls and the corridor walls are also rated for an hour. So that, those two in concert kind of provide a, the unit itself is somewhat protected. So we don't have to really provide areas of shelter.
Thank you. Add on to that, what about, is there, I didn't see it, but will there be an on-demand generator for those residents that are dependent on electricity?
One of the funding sources for this project is going to be CHFA, and they do require a standby generator. And there's a, it's going to be a diesel generator located kind of in the back corner, where the cursor is circling right now, kind of behind the dumpsters.
Excellent. And the, I know there's forty-nine units. Are any of them specifically for people that are in wheelchairs with lower counters or lower sinks, or are they all the same layout?
That's a good question. The Connecticut code requires that we provide ten percent of the units as fully handicap-accessible. The remaining thirty-nine units, because there is an elevator, are what we term as type B units, which are handicap-adaptable. And basically, that means that they have the turning radiuses and the clearances, the doors are wide, and the only thing that makes it, to convert it to fully accessible, is you'd have to add grab bars in the bathroom, which, being elderly, we may want to do grab bars just for safety reasons, if the tenant wants. So, yeah.
And I had DOT questions, but those were addressed the virtual meeting you guys had. I'm good with that. One question for DOT, I know you're going to set up a meeting with them, and I think I had mentioned this in the past, bring in the bus line on 25 up a little bit, if any of these individuals or the staff need to get there by bus, just a thought for the future to add on to this project, which, just food for thought. But those were all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Penney chief.
I have no question at this time.
Commissioner Schneider.
No questions.
Commissioner Westland. Commissioner Ambrose.
He's had a question for Dave. Dave Majorkin, where's the, you have a reserve septic system there? Where is that located?
Dave Majorkin for the applicant. It's located in that area of the, right where the cursor is. That's the, that's the primary in the reserve. A reserve area is a requirement of the state health code. You can't develop a system without one.
No, I know, but is that adequate if that system fails?
It's a hundred percent reserve area, and on a building such as this, when it's, you know, not of a strictly single-family residential nature, and it's under a parking lot, the fill material that is required for that, it goes in place with the primary. So it's a hundred percent reserve area if it's needed.
Yeah, my question was, if the other system fails, is that adequate enough to accommodate that site?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Commissioner Condon.
No questions.
Commissioner Mayne.
No questions.
And I have no questions. Like to go to the public now? There any members of the public that would like to comment or otherwise on this application? Please make yourselves known at this time.
Ron Benofsky.
Go ahead, Mr. Benofsky.
Yes, I have a couple of questions regarding the septic system. I live right near a fifty-five and plus age-restricted unit, High Meadows. The septic systems there, I assume, were designed to the same requirements as you're probably using here for replacement systems and whatever. I know for a fact the systems in that particular unit, and many other units in town for that matter, that use the design systems that the state is responsible for monitoring. I wouldn't say a hundred percent of them, but I would, I know this percentage of them that have had problems, tremendous problems, because of septic field failures and the lack of having a proper place to put the replacement systems when they try to put them in, also fail many times. I don't particularly think we have a good track record of using those standards, whatever they were, and I think somebody should do a study of those in town and see what the root cause of their failures were, as opposed, when looking at them in conjunction with the requirements they were installed to. Something is not right. And that just doesn't go for housing places. That's some of the commercial units in town. You're talking forty-nine units. I assume that's going to be two people per unit minimum? And is there, what's the square footage of these units? I'd like an answer to that right now.
This is Dave Goslin with Cross Key Architects. The average unit size is six-hundred-ninety-five square feet.
Okay, that's probably tight, actually. The, you're talking, I'd like to know what the problems that Scott had were, and I think this is the time to make those known to the commission for any, so they could better possibly understand the wetlands concerns. What were Scott's problems with the fields that you just mentioned, but didn't go into detail? I'd like an answer to that, please.
I don't think there were any problems, Mr. Benofsky, that weren't addressed.
Did Scott release a report? Or did he make comments? He said they were worked out.
And they reviewed all the comments tonight.
Well, I know Scott makes comments on every septic system, but they still fail, and they fail, you know, in my, just the ones that are in my neighborhood, and I was here before they were, and I know that something was, I don't know if it was done right, I assume it was done according to the requirements at the time. The problem is, Monroe has a lot of water, high-water table, no matter where you are, whether you're on top of a hill, down the bottom of a hill, in between, the water just stays where it goes. It doesn't drain off, like, I don't know what their perk test tells them, but there's obviously a problem, and they do get overloaded. And they have to be replaced, modified, or whatever, which becomes a very expensive but predictable situation. Of all the units that, I forget the name, what's the name of your construction company here? But they said they have units all over Connecticut, and how many of them were designed on properties that required the use of septic systems with water tables similar to Monroe, as opposed to possibly city sewers or larger communities that had an ability to drain off water? Do they have, what's, could they compare this septic field for, you're talking forty-nine, you're talking almost a hundred people, that's a pretty large septic system. It can't, it just doesn't have any tolerance for failure. If it does fail, what's the effect immediately? You're talking about an area, you're already draining water off under the road to a wetlands. The worst-case scenario, if it failed and had to be The worst case scenario, if it failed and had to be drained, it's going to affect the water on the surface, surface water drainage into that, that water drainage system into a wetlands. Does that affect the Paquonic River watershed into the Paquonic reservoir and subsequently the Eastern reservoir? Anybody have an answer?
Well, Mr. Benofsky, you can go, just continue with your comments. And at the end of your comments, I'll give them time for answers.
Gotcha, okay. You're talking traffic of 20,000 cars per day. You're talking 49 units. Possible, does that parking lot address this, is that for like two cars per unit? Will that parking lot accommodate that?
A parking lot accommodates 1.2 parking spaces per unit, which meets the CHAFA guideline and code.
Okay. I know at 62 years old, my wife and I, we had two cars. I, I assume that probably will be close to what they do. What, where, if you have you also have a laundry section there, that's a lot of water. In the development or preparing this lot, how, is there going to be any blasting, rock crushing, material removal? I didn't see any on the computer, it's hard to see what you're really doing in that regard. Anybody have a quick answer? I'd like to, if somebody will answer that later on, I'd appreciate it. I guess that's it for now. I hope we have a chance to respond if somebody answers some of the questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benofsky. Let's see if there are any other members of the public at this point. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this application? Any other members of the public that would like to comment on this application?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ray Giovanni, 22, Carmen Lane, Monroe, Connecticut.
Bye, Mr. Giovanni.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I had the privilege of seeing a facility like this down county, Lower Fairfield County. And what I observed there was a, you know, a great facility. And I wanted to speak to the vitality of which I witnessed by the residents that were there and how they interacted with the staff members that were on duty that particular day or that I visited. It was on a first-name basis, you know, as, as the residents were leaving to go on with their day. I did visit some of the rooms to see the, the size and scale that was described of that seven, you know, 695 square feet. It was, you know, very efficient, as you can imagine. And what I noticed is that the, the, many of the, many of the, of those rooms that we walked into were individuals, not necessarily couples, just, maybe just by chance is all I'm saying. So I don't know what this mix makeup would be. And I think that being in town since 1993, we've spoken for decades now about how the seniors are leaving our town because they can't afford to stay here on their fixed incomes. And I think that this would help, you know, address that concern. So again, I, I just wanted to mention that because I think it's important that the kind of vitality that I saw and the, and the lively activities that were going on there with all the amenities and so forth, was actually very refreshing to, to witness. So I applaud the efforts of this group to try to, you know, amend some of our, our own rules into their plans, which is very accommodating. And I, I give them a lot of credit for trying to do so, and we thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Giovanni. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Hearing none, I'll be going to take it back to the applicant to sum up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, David Hoops. I'll just briefly address the, the parking question. Connecticut Housing Partners operates a number of very similar projects. And they have a, you know, with one-bedroom units like this, or predominantly one-bedroom, they, and a lot of the residents don't have a car, but they have very good understanding of how much parking they need. And several of their other projects, parking ratios of 1.2 spaces per car or less, in some cases, under one space per unit. And they have found that they have, they have more than enough parking under those ratios. So the last thing we want is not to have enough parking, or should never want to be overparked either. And we're very, very confident that we have plenty of parking. And, you know, other, other than that, other than to simply say that we, we do think it is a very nice project. We don't necessarily, I don't at this time have anything to add to what we've already said.
Thank you very much for very thorough and well orchestrated presentation, I have to say.
Thank you.
Chairman. Excuse me, Ray Giovanni speaking again.
Right.
From 22 Carmen Lane, Monroe. I know when I was visiting, I was inquiring about the basements as well. And the, the gentlemen were very clear to, to explain to me, speaking about the issue about blasting, removing materials, was that, as we all know, it's a very expensive proposition to do so. So there was no intent to remove materials, blasting, or putting basements in for just construction cost containment. That's what I was told at that time. I'm not sure if that's still true for this facility. I was just trying to help Mr. Benofsky understand that.
Yes, right. Right, thank you. Emily Weffman with Two Design from the design team. You're correct, this building is constructed at lab on grade. We paid careful, close attention to the documented elevations of ledge on site. And that's why the building is elevation is such, and we worked very hard at the grading with, from the driveway access to make that work, to minimize and give careful regard to any boulder removal. So we did minimize any boulder removal, as Ray did just mention. That is an expensive operation. So in regards to the community and as well as the client, we did pay careful attention to the elevation of ledge and the boulder and rock removal is minimized.
Thank you. So I think we need to leave this application open, is that correct, Rick? Till we get in wetland approval?
That is correct.
So we're going to keep this application open. And we'll reconvene at the next regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, that's the fourth, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I just confirm that this is for the three applications regarding 195, 201, and 211 Main Street?
Yes, and the next meeting is the February 4th. All right, thank you all for the presentation. Would you have a site development plan next on the agenda? This is number 11, 200 Monroe Turnpike, L W District, The Aquarian Water Company. I don't know, was this noticed, Ryan?
No, these are not.
No, these are play plans.
Rick, do you have exhibits?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Okay, for the first application, SDP 2021 oh four, file number 144, exhibit number one, application and CD. Exhibit number two, stormwater and erosion and sediment report. Exhibit number three, 11 sheet plan set. Exhibit number four, letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission, based on the inland wetlands timeline. And exhibit number five, ART comments from planning. Exhibit number six, ART comments, town engineer. Exhibit seven, response to comments, town engineer. Exhibit eight, response to comments, planning administrator. And exhibit nine, updated plan sheet, and that is all.
Thank you, Rick. Do we have someone from the applicant tonight?
Yes, good evening, Chairman. My name is Andrew White, representing the client, Aquarian Water Company. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut and representing Titan Bond Consultant Engineers. Our address is 1,000 Bridgeport Avenue in Shelton, Connecticut. The project in question is a parking lot extension at 200 Monroe Turnpike. On my screen here is a quick site plan of the surrounding areas. We are located just over the Trumbull Line in the town of Monroe and right along Monroe Turnpike Route 111. The existing site, it is a two-story building known as 200 Connecticut, surrounded by wetlands, and we have an existing parking lot that is located to the southwest of the building. Current access drive is off of Monroe Turnpike. The proposed application is to construct a 12-space parking lot that is along the northwest side, the front entrance of 200 Connecticut, or 200 Monroe Turnpike. This includes 11 regular spaces and one handicap space. The parking lot itself is supposed to drain to the northwest into a series of one bio-retention swale and a rain garden to handle stormwater runoff from the new bituminous area. This was designed in accordance with the 2004 Connecticut Stormwater Manual and Town of Monroe requirements. The grade of the parking lot is a uniform 1% pitch from a new proposed sidewalk along the frontage. Drains directly across, so our handicap spaces in compliant with ADA requirements of being less than 2% in pitch. And then, as previously stated, we have a bio-retention swale that runs north, essentially north to south, with a spillway into our rain garden. The rain garden has two spillways that then direct overflow into the wetlands located to the west of the building. We have a proposed landscape, landscaping plan for not only the frontage of the building, but also for the rain garden itself and bio-retention swale. With these features of low-impact development, it is important to have correct biofiltration seed mix specified, as well as plants. The water quality features, where these water quality features really reduce the impact of runoff from parking lots due to the root systems of these plants to help filter and treat the stormwater flow. So this project, the proposal of these additional parking space reduces peak flow runoff from the site to, before pre-existing, or before existing conditions. And also the volumetric flow from increasing to a bituminous asphalt is reduced due to these features. We are proposing two new additional lights. The parking lot is currently illuminated to the Monroe requirements. This provides the appropriate foot candle lighting in the Monroe Planning and Zoning requirements. And the pole height is 14 feet high, which is under the 20-foot maximum for the zone and isn't fitting with the lights on site. Soil erosion and sedimentation control is, well, will be provided. We're providing a straw wattle barrier on the northwest corner of the development where the tree line is getting cut back to manage any sedimentation that would enter the wetlands. And we are proposing an anti-tracking pad for the construction of the parking lot. This concludes my presentation of the proposed parking lot. And I'd love to open it up to questions to the commissioners at this time.
Thank you very much. It looks like all of the ART planning and Scott's comments were all answered satisfactorily. Are there any other comments from the ART, Rick, that were still outstanding, but were not answered satisfactorily?
No, everything.
All right, in which case, we're going to go ahead then and poll the commissioners for any questions. We'll start with Commissioner Lupo.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Panici.
I have one question regarding, where are you discharging the excess water?
The water from the parking lot gets collected by the swale, which discharges to the rain garden. The rain garden has two discharge points into this wetland to the west. There's a culvert that runs under the driveway and connects all the wetlands. And so the water then pools and goes into the groundwater table there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schneider.
No questions.
Commissioner Westland.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
No question at this time, Mike.
Commissioner Condon.
No question.
Commissioner Maiene.
No questions.
And are you going to talk about the rooftop solar panels separately?
Yes, that is a different, different company that's assisting Aquarian Water with that proposal.
All right, okay, great. And if there are no questions, do we need to wait for an inland wetlands on that, Rick?
I know, but you can close the discussion and, and then you can get into deliberation tonight or table it to the fourth.
All right, well, we can close it for tonight, we'll close that. And then we can go ahead to the second part of SDP 2021-01, file 146. I think you read the, did you read the exhibits for that, Rick?
No, I gotta, I have to read that now.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, this is for the second application, SDP 2021-01, file 146. Exhibit number one, application and narrative. Exhibit number two, plan sheets, eight sheets. Exhibit three, ARB comments. And that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, for the applicant, go ahead.
You're on mute.
Good evening, committee, committee members. I am Mark McGinley of US Green Technologies. We're located in Madison, Connecticut. We've been contracted by Aquarian Water Company of Connecticut to install a PV solar project on the property. And I'll get into the presentation. I'm sorry, I'm having slight technical difficulties here. Okay, here we are. My apologies. So this project consists of solar arrays on the rooftop of the building and also a carport covering 23 parking spots in the front of the building. The majority of the modules will be mounted in racks in a landscape position. Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The majority of the modules will be mounted in racks in landscape position with five degrees of tilt. The rack in used are ballasted and engineered to meet wind and snow conditions. There is a smaller array that will be flush-mounted to a pitched section of the roof facing northwest. The design complies with all offset regulations and plenty of open space, which was provided to access all of the mechanical equipment presently on the roof. The roof-mounted system is, will account for 60% of the energy production for this project. The carport itself would be located in the front, the south part of the parking lot, almost directly out the front door. It will cover 23 existing parking spots. It will consist of seven columns going across the existing island between the parking spaces. This will provide approximately 40% of the energy being produced for the project. The clearance on the, on the low edge of the carport is 14 feet high. And this allows for any trucks to pass by. It's a cantilevered system, so there are no corner posts. Makes it easy for snow removal and plowing. The structure itself is not watertight, though there is spacing between each of the modules that make up the roof component of the carport. Rainwater will continue to come through and drain as it always has on this property using the existing storm drains. Give you a rough idea of what the carport will look like. And this, this concludes our presentation. We can open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. We'll go to the commissioners for questions. Start with Commissioner Lupo.
Thank you. You just answered my question. I was going to ask if the carport was going to be solely to have panels on top or if it was going to be some sort of source for electric vehicles used by Aquarian. But I see here it's just for parking your cars with the panels on top, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Panici.
I'm sure you thought of it, but I'm just concerned about the wind, the wind and the structure.
The wind?
Wind shear, yes.
Yeah. You know, all of our all of our projects are constructed to meet the requirements for both wind and snow load.
Okay.
For the town of Monroe.
It's the town of Monroe. Does it meet the state standard?
Yes, state and local ordinances, we comply.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schneider.
No questions.
Commissioner Westland.
Yeah, are there going to be any ballards in front of these parking spaces?
We won't have a need for those because the columns and the footers are going to be in the island itself. So we shouldn't need any ballards. The, the columns typically are every two parking spots. So when cars pull in, it's not straight in front of the, the front of the car, the bumper.
It does look like there's some spaces, according to the rendering, that don't have ballards.
Oh, this rendering isn't for this project that you're looking at right now. The, this was just an example of, of what the the typical carport looks like.
Understood, thanks.
Yeah.
The, the particular project that we have has got a five-foot island that runs down the length of the structure. So the columns will all be within the five-foot island.
Yeah, Mr. Nash.
More questions, thank you.
Name and address.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
Mr. Nash, I think. Mr. Nash, we need you to just identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm Jamie Nash, Carport Structures. I've designed the structure that will be provided.
Thank you.
Rick, is it, is this, is this carport on the plan?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
What page was that behind?
Leon, there's two different sets of plans. There's one to the first application that we heard. This one was transmitted to you electronically.
When was that?
I believe it would have been last Thursday or Friday.
Didn't see that plan. You wouldn't have gave it to me on the Friday mailing when you dropped off the paperwork on Saturday? You want to put it in that paperwork?
No, I know it. I said that out loud. It would have been received slightly more recently than that. I don't, I'm not working remotely through that.
It was a separate mailing.
Well, I get it.
Very thin package that I think it must have been dropped off. It was a thin packet in a white envelope.
Yeah, that's what I have here, but I don't have the latest drawings because I don't have my drawings. But anyway.
You know, Leo, we need to continue this, so we'll make sure you get it, okay?
That's fine. The question I had asking, is there going to be any lighting in this thing? Yes, they'll, they'll be lighting on the underside of the carport. Okay, that's in the plan too? So I just don't have that plan. I was looking at another plan. That's all I have for now, Rick, and we're going to continue this.
And at the Architectural Review Board meeting, it was asked whether or not electric car facilities will be provided, and they're going to do the conduit work for that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Condon.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Maene.
No questions.
I have no questions either. So let's take it back to the applicant. Any closing remarks?
Well, you know, we're all doing what we can for the environment these days. And this is going to offset close to 70% of the energy presently being used by this facility. Again, the it's going to produce many kilowatt-hours of clean renewable energy. And Aquarian Water Company is, you know, very conscious of the environment, as you could well imagine. And we believe it will be a positive project for the town of Monroe.
Okay, thank you. So I think, Rick, can we close this hearing tonight? This site development plan discussion?
Yeah, close the discussion and table it to February 4th.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. That ends the site development plan portion of tonight's agenda. Next is deliberations and determinations. Number 12 is pending minute meetings. We have minutes from December the 17th that we did not approve last meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 17th.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the December 17th Planning and Zoning Mission.
Have a motion and need a second.
Second.
A motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call the roll. Westland.
Yes.
Ambrosi.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Maene.
Yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Motion passes. We accepted the minutes for December 17th. We also have, you also have before you the minutes from January the 7th, 2021. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from January the 7th.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from January 7th.
Have a motion, need a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any discussion of the minutes from January the 7th? Hearing none, or we'll call the roll. Westland.
Yes.
Ambrosi.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Maene.
Yes.
O'Reilly, yes. The motion passes five to zero. We have pending application deliberations and determinations. First one is SCP 2020-02, file number 1622A, 556 Pepper Street. This is Mr. Caesar Rios's application, which we reviewed last meeting. We have a draft approval. Is there any discussion tonight on this approval? If not, Rick, can you sum up the approval?
Do you want me to read it, Mr. Chairman, or?
Not word for word, just sum it up for the, before we vote.
Okay, as the commission is aware, this is a partial conversion of an existing single-family home to a landscaping business. The property consists of 1.3 acres. There's special exception permit site development plan. A proposed rain garden will be installed as per the Inland Wetlands Commission. A concrete pad will be installed as recommended by the commission, the applicant agreed. And that's to accommodate the storage containers. Site is served by public water or private onsite septic system. No exterior building changes are proposed. The commission did not require referral to the Architectural Review Board. And I think that's about it. Adequate compliant off-street parking and loading will be provided to accommodate both the single-family dwelling and his business. And the septic system will remain unchanged, and there's no changes to existing lighting. So having said that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for a motion in a second.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to accept and approve the site development plan, SCP 2020-02.
I make a motion to accept SCP-2020-02, file number 1622A.
Have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call the roll. Commissioner Westland.
Yes.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
Yes.
Commissioner Condon.
Yes.
Commissioner Maene.
Yes.
And O'Reilly is, yes, the S E P is approved five to zero. Next on the determined deliberations and determinations is we close 615 Main Street tonight, which is Jungle Gym. I'd like to deliberate on that at this point. So on this deliberation, all the five main seated members. So unfortunately, the alternates cannot participate in this discussion. So let's start the discussion with Commissioner Maene. Do you have any? How are you leaning towards this application?
I think I'm good to go. It's fine with me.
Good to go on the 615 Main Street. Commissioner Condon. Commissioner Condon.
Yeah, I'm, you know, thrilled that a company is doing well in town and wants to continue to work in town and expand in town as opposed to leaving town. So yeah, I like it and would move for an approval.
Commissioner Ambrosi.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too, Mike.
Okay, Commissioner Westland.
Yeah, I like the, the modified ingress and egress as far as the parking lot is concerned. And I think it's a business that the town could use. And I'm, I'm definitely for approving the project.
Okay, and I am as well. So let's direct the staff to a draft and approval. Okay, Rick.
Okay.
So can we deliberate on 200 Monroe Turnpike site development plan? So can we deliberate on 200 Monroe Charm Pike Site Development Plan? Or are we waiting for any additional information on that from Aquarian?
Well, there's a couple things. I would hold off on that, yes.
There are, okay.
Yep.
Then the other application that we closed last week and did not have time to deliberate on was REA 2020-04. File number 1011E, this is the proposed Stevenson Lumber SB2 district. If you remember, this was this application, there are really two applications here. There's a site development plan, and there's a text amendment. So we heard the text amendment last month, and we closed the text amendment. So five commissioners now that were seated then are still seated, so we can deliberate on the text amendment. Rick, can you just briefly run through that text amendment for the commissioners to refresh the memories?
Oh, absolutely. Okay, the commission is considering zoning regulations text amendment submitted by the Kimball Family Investment LLC by establishing a new Stevenson Business District SB2 to promote the reuse of the former Stevenson Lumber facility by fostering opportunities for new redevelopment, including a mixture of commercial and industrial uses using the existing major transportation corridor infrastructure of State Roots 111 and 34. This application was referred to the town of Newtown as required by state statute 8S7DF. It was also referred to the Nagatuck Valley Councilor Governments and MetroCog. A public hearing was duly published in the Voices. And essentially now the commission has to determine the following issues. That the amendment will or not change or diminish any applicable lot area or bulk standards in the town. The amendment will allow a variety of compatible or non-compatible uses, including business, manufacturing, commercial parking, wholesale and distribution centers, commercial, industrial, and self-storage facilities. The amendment will encourage reinvestment in and renovation of underutilized and underperforming commercial buildings, while also encouraging new development, both resulting in positive economic impacts, while imposing minimal burden on town services and infrastructure. The amendment will or will not provide a means for positive economic change to the benefit of existing property development and the surrounding neighborhood as such. The amendment is or not in harmony with the purposes and intent of the zoning regulations. The amendment will or not adversely affect community health, safety, convenience, or property values. Amendment is inconsistent or consistent with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the 2010 P O C D. So the commission has an application before you that will add uses, as the commission is aware, above and beyond what the current commercial zone allows. And now the commission has to determine if it's in the best interest to move forward on the adoption with the stated reasons. Or if there are some issues, the commission should note them as well.
All right, so we're going to deliberate on the text amendment, which does not include any specific uses or, well, it actually does include uses, but no, no specific tenants at this point.
Mike, do we even change the zone on this yet, right?
This is the zone.
This is a zone change?
This is the text amendment, and part two is the zone change to the map with master plan.
We need to mean that until, until.
February 4th.
Right, so why are we going to vote on a text amendment when we don't even, we didn't even discuss the zone change?
Well, they are separate applications.
And you have to do the text.
But what if, what if the zone change doesn't hold up, then the text amendment won't hold up, right? Or, right, is that, am I right or not?
Yes.
Wouldn't you change the zone before you went and changed the text amendment?
Well, no, this is, you have to create the new zone that's being proposed before the commission.
Right, but the text amendment doesn't come into play until the zone is changed, no?
Right, what you're suggesting is you'd like to have both together for a comprehensive discussion. However, this is the first step, so this step has to, has to be dealt with first.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't know about what the rest of the commissioners.
Hey, Rick, it's Bruno. I'm, I'm a little confused. Why wouldn't you change the zone first?
No, you got it, you're creating.
Zone doesn't exist.
It doesn't, right, brand-new zone, like the mixed use.
So you're gonna, you could adopt a text amendment for a potential zone that doesn't exist?
Yes.
That's weird.
But you also asked the applicant to define it as a specific property, which, which we're doing. It's Stevenson Lumber. This text amendment is specifically for the Stevenson Lumber parcel. It's two parts, the creation of the zone, like we did for the mixed use, and then the map change, and the map change also has the master plan component. That was requested by the commission, and the applicant fulfilled that. So what, what Leon is saying is he wants to discuss both, but the second part is tabled until February 4th. So you have to determine tonight if you're ready.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm not going to speak for Leon, but I don't think he's asking that at all. I think he's asking why is there not a zone change before a text amendment change? Before a text amendment is created? Leon's saying that property is non-existent right now because there's no zone for it, and we're going to put a text amendment on it. That's what I'm understanding. I could be wrong. Leon.
No, this is the zone. This is the new zone being proposed for the Stevenson Lumber site.
No, this isn't a text amendment being proposed.
It's called a text amendment, but it's the new, it's the creation of a new zone.
Which could then be used for other properties in the future, but they would have.
This one is specifically for the site, Ryan. This is specifically for Stevenson Lumber, because the parcel is large. You can't do it for five acres and under. That's spot zoning.
Yeah.
This is a large site, so that's why it's confined to the Stevenson Lumber area.
What I'm saying is, if we change, if we vote on a text amendment, it has stuff in there that doesn't agree for into zone change, why would we do that? I have some discussions I have to talk about on the zone change, but why, why would we vote on a text amendment if on a zone change, we're not going to allow something to happen or whatever? Because I have certain questions on that, and that's why I'm asking you that question. Why are we doing a text amendment ahead of the zone? It should be done simultaneous, I would believe.
Well, you do the two applications. It's just that the second application hasn't completed the public hearing process.
Rick, can I provide clarification here? Is that all right, Rick?
Yes.
So in the text itself, if there is a use, a condition, something that the commission is not comfortable with in the text amendment, then it needs to be dealt with currently with the text amendment. If you approve the text amendment and they continue to come forward with the zone change, and everything is applicable to the text amendment that you approve, realistically, you have no ground to deny them the zone change and potential development of the site under that text amendment. So this is the time when all of that wording, phrasing, potential development needs to be looked at, because if you approve the text amendment with something, as Leon, you're saying, there's stuff that you, you have, you know, still concerns about, that needs to be done at this point. What you're doing is creating the regulation and the zone that then they can apply to be part of. It just happens that we already did open the zone change to start that application as well. Does that make any sense?
And you eliminated a use, the, the Department of Works. Remember that was asked to be removed? Beginning?
Not even just that. A year or so ago, they had come in front of us with a much, we're kind of robust, and we were like, we said no, and they've since shrunk it to what it is now, which is the text amendment, which everyone has copies of. So where does not approve text amendment?
Right, all the uses, the, the commercial outdoor storage, the warehousing, the manufacturing.
It can all be approved in this zone, and then if they come in front of us and all of a sudden there's another use that's not within this text amendment for this property, so potentially, it doesn't fit with the zoning regulations we just created.
And, right, all of the uses require a special exception. Each propose, each propose, each proposal for all the buildings that exist there will require a special exception, S E, S E D.
All right, so do we want to deliberate on this tonight? Or do we want to hold off until we have the other application completed or the other public hearing closed? That's, that's the question I'm putting forward to everyone. So let's ask. So this is just the regular seated commissioners again. Commissioner Westland, what's your opinion on deliberate tonight or hold off?
I'd like to hold off and let, let the other close ahead of time. This way we have as much information as possible.
Commissioner Ambrosi?
I want to hold off until we finish the other one, too.
So, Rick, we can hold off, correct?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, Commissioner Condon?
Yeah, if the rest of the commission wants to hold off, I'm okay with it.
Commissioner Maiene?
I'll hold off.
All right. So then we will not deliberate on REA 2020-04 tonight. We'll hold off on that. And I believe that's all that we have before us, correct, Rick?
Yes, and to further assist the commission, let me put together a better summary. So this way you'll have, you, you need to look at that summary, all right, because there's a lot of moving parts in this, so.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Let's move on to other business, number 14, Regulation Review Amendment Work Session. We do have a meeting planned for Monday, this coming Monday at 5:30 for the Regulation Subcommittee. So we're going to be starting something new in the Regulation Subcommittee. We have a whole list of suggestions that we've gotten from EDC as to ways that we can streamline the process to make it a little less burdensome and onerous on developers coming into town. So we have a list of things that we're going to start working on, and I will bring, or we will bring them to the attention of the full commission as we move through them.
Hey, Mike, is that in person or are we doing the go-to meeting?
That's in person.
At the, at Town Hall again?
Town Hall, Monday at 5:30.
Perfect, thank you.
At the annex table. That's a large annex table near the zoning department.
Rick, make sure you're there.
It's going to be, yeah, that's the long table, so.
Don't be late.
All right, number 14 is correspondence. Do we have any other correspondence?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Reports is number 16. I don't, do not have a report. Do any of the commissioners have any reports?
I, I have, I have something quick.
Go ahead.
So just so the rest of the commission knows, I did receive an unsolicited email from Mr. Metropolis after our last meeting, answering some questions that I had brought up during the meeting. I did not respond and immediately forwarded that email to staff, who then actually sent out the email to everybody. So just wanted to make sure that was in the record.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners? All right, then we'll go to Rick with, for your, the land use staff reports.
Yeah, we have the next P O C D update meeting with Francisco, and that is on the 28th. We'll be sending out an agenda with the outline. I, I just want, you know, all the commissioners to be aware, we have to move very quickly from this point forward. The state gave us an extension till March. So we have to button up the goals and objectives. We received the open space plan, so that'll be incorporated. But Francisco is really going to ask some very poignant and directed, direct questions to get the draft prepared for early February. Because once the draft is submitted, then we'll be looking at it to edit it, add, delete, et cetera. So it's going to be a pretty intense meeting on the 28th, so have your notes with you. You know, look at the questionnaire again, the results of the questionnaire, and, and then we'll move forward.
Rick, can you send out a copy of the open space plan? I don't think I've seen that.
Yeah, I just received that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other?
Hey, Rick, that's next Thursday, correct?
Yes.
That's correct, yeah.
What time again?
Seven o'clock.
And that's, that's virtual.
That's virtual, okay.
It'll be like seven to nine o'clock. It'll be like two hours, but it's going to be pretty intense. This one's going to be intense.
I'll have my intense shoes on.
Okay, Rick, do you have anything else?
That concludes it, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you all for participating in tonight's discussions, and we have a lot to think about. And at this point, the chair will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have motion and need a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous.